Lee County Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Firstly, I'd like for us to have a moment of silence, please. Now if you will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have four people signed up for public comments. We always welcome comments from our public that we serve. I'd like to remind you that anything that you bring to the board during your comment section, we cannot really address immediately then. And if there's something that should be done staff-wise or within the school-wise, you're more than welcome to see Dr. Dawsonbach over here. And if there's any other way that we can assist you, please feel free to reach out to us. The first one I have is Amy Petraka from her school. Hey, Amy, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I guess that was where it was supposed to be. My name is Amy Petraka, 618 Halifax Street in Sanford. I'm the parent of two Lee County school students and the principal of hundreds of students. And tonight, I'm here to address you as the principal of WB Wicker Elementary School. And I'd like to talk about the word "performance." Performance is defined as the process of carrying out and accomplishing a task, a function, or an action. And WB Wicker was given the task by the state to move our school, with this document, long-term goals in reading, to a proficiency level of 19.6% proficient on last year's testing. And we did not do that. Instead, we took our school to 44.2% proficient. And by definition, I would call that substantial performance. We were given the task of growing students as compared by students across the state, and we did that as well. And the year before, we exceeded growth in that category. I would call that, by definition, excellent performance. We were given the task of seeing that 13 individual subgroups met growth and proficiency, and we did that in 12 out of 13 of those subgroups. Comparatively, I would call that stellar performance. As we began our year to continue our tremendous growth that we've made in just two years of testing existence at WB Wicker, I thank the teachers for the work that they did to get there. But last week, the state board released school performance grades that labeled us low-performing. Just to recap, we met or exceeded every expectation given to us by the state and were labeled by the state as low-performing. How does that work? And I'm here to say it doesn't work. And the formula, which values the proficiency over the growth that it takes to get to proficiency by a margin of 80 to 20, has been proven over and over throughout the state to undermine the critical and necessary work being done in schools that serve our most at-risk students. Tonight, I'm asking the board to reflect on what you want to see done to that system that undermines your goal of teacher retention and my goal of teacher retention. What do you want that system of accountability to look like for our district? And what are you doing to see that that happens? Many of you promised, as candidates and as elected board members, to support teachers. I'm here to tell you that the support that my teachers need is a board that will wield their collective power to effect change and create an accountability model that is fair. As I close, I invite you all to join me in labeling my teachers, which is what the state has done. What they have achieved in the last two years deserves a label. I label them as dedicated, determined, persevering. I label them as relentlessly committed to students. And when you call them names or give them labels, please use those and not low-performing, because that is just not truth. Thank you for your time tonight.
Next, we have John Mathis.
Good evening. My name is John Mathis, 101 Waddell Court, Apex. And I am the math department chairperson here at Lee County High School. I have come here this evening to address the county's public announcement about last year's school performance grades from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. As of January 2024, I will be in my sixth year here at Lee County High School. I feel that I have been called here to serve the students of Lee County. Prior to COVID, we were beginning to see much growth in the math department in both Math 1 and Math 3 scores. We know that we have a great responsibility to the students in our school because the EOC's test scores, along with the math ACT test scores, do account for a good portion of our performance grade. When I began here at Lee County, we had a fully-staffed math department. Over the past three, or previous three years after I got here, we lost 30 teachers. Over the past two years, we have developed a more consistent team with less turnover. But we are still several teachers short, as most schools are in the state. Many teachers in our department have sacrificed and have spent many hours teaching four blocks instead of three. We do so for the students. Everything we do is for the students. To be honest, when I found out that we increased our grade from a D to a C, I immediately congratulated my Math 4 classes because they are the students, the juniors and seniors, who were a major part of that success from last year. This is why I'm coming to speak this evening. When I read, "Last year's performance validates the many vital changes the Lee County Board of Education began since last December," I am discouraged, I am perplexed, and I am upset. The first set of tests were in January, less than one month from that December timeframe. The second set of tests were in June, only six months from the December timeframe. As I continued to read the press release, I just knew I would see admiration for our students, our teachers, our administrators, our parents. None was to come. I would like to take this moment of public comment to say congratulations to the students, the teachers, the administrators, the parents of Lee County High School. We did a wonderful job last year in coming, getting our scores up, and we are going to do so much more better in the future. I do not believe any changes made by this board since December is validated by last year's performance. I personally am not satisfied with being a C school. I live in Apex. I drive past several A and B schools each day on my commute to Lee County High School, and I want to be like them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Brandy Johnston.
Good evening, board members. My name is Brandy Johnston. I'm a mathematics teacher here at Lee County High School. I remember sitting in a staff meeting one year ago after officially receiving a school performance grade of a D. Our principal began that meeting reminding us that our school performance grade was not a reflection of the phenomenal teachers and excellent support staff we have here at our school. Granted, we had to buckle down and really step up our work as educators. There were steps and criteria that we had to meet per the state's requirements, and I have never worked harder in my teaching career than I did last year. Everyone came together to provide the very best we had to offer our students. These students worked harder than they have ever worked, hurdled over learning gaps that resulted from the pandemic and from online learning. Our students began to grow and excel, and many of them began to fall back in love with learning. As you all know by now, new school performance grades have been reported. I sat behind my computer screen and frantically read the information published by our central office last Wednesday. Lee County High School was one of the many schools that had a school performance grade of C or higher. I took a moment to congratulate my students for all of the hard work that they put into the school the previous year. We took a short moment to honor each other and to be proud as a school family. However, my heart sank as I turned the page to find the following quote. "Last year's performance validates the many vital changes the Lee County Board of Education began since last December," said Board Chair Sherilyn Womack. "We remain committed to accountability, transparency, and improving the academic growth and performance of our students." I continued reading, but nowhere did I find any acknowledgement of the hard work of our students, teachers, or staff at any of our schools. What change did this board make that made my students want to perform better than they have ever performed before? What changes did you make in December that motivated students to keep up and step up for the state exams in January? What change did this board make that wanted me, that made me want to be the best educator that my students could possibly ever have? I'm disappointed that this board's first thought was about themselves and not those that made those changes. I am ashamed that, when given the opportunity, this board stole the credit from our students. You stole their praise. You stole their effort. You stole their validation and claimed it as your own. I'm just a measly old teacher, and I don't have a lot to say about what you get to do. But I do advocate for my students with the ferocity of a lioness. This performance was not your validation. So I want to take a moment to thank the teachers for the thousands of unpaid hours that you spent making engaging, rigorous lessons and activities. I want to take a moment to praise our students. Without you, none of this would even be possible. I want you to know that I see you. I recognize your hard work, and I'm so very proud of each and every school because, believe me, it was not easy, but we did it. For the board, I leave you with this. Be cautious about building your validation on the backs of those whose work goes unnoticed.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next, we have Shannon Montero. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. It's not on purpose.
I'm dressed like a student today, so I'm dressed like a student.
I was about to say, mission accomplished.
Yeah. My name is Shannon Montero. I am a math teacher here at Lee County High School as well. And I am here to express my disappointment in this board and its chairperson. I've been here seven years. It'll be eight years in February. Last year, I transferred to a school in Chatham County because my son had graduated from here in June of 2022, and I wanted to be closer to home. Sorry, I'm very nervous. It took me two weeks to realize that I wanted to be back here. So I put my 30-day notice in and came back to Lee Senior on October 17, 2023, 2022. During the time I was in Chatham County, I heard that LCHS had dropped to a D school. One of the things that I decided on when coming back here was that we were not going to stay a D long. You see, I teach Math 3, which is a tested subject. I took it personally that our grade dropped because that meant I wasn't working hard enough at my job. The rest of my department felt the same way, so we made it a goal to get back to a C school. As a team, our Math 1 and Math 3 teachers worked harder than we have ever worked to achieve the goal of a C school. Math is a big part of the score for the school. Fast forward to June 2023. There are three of us who teach Math 3, two of whom taught four blocks. Math 3, we had a 57% proficiency on the Math 3 EOC, and we had over 80% growth. Math 1 had 23% proficiency, and one of our teachers had 34, Math 1, 34% proficiency, which is excellent for Math 1. When I tell you we worked harder as teachers than we ever have, it's not exaggeration. Not only did we work our butts off, but so did our students, their parents, guardians, our admin team, and our awesome principal, Betsy Bridges. It was our village of amazing people who brought our school score up to a C. We worked together for the greater good of our students, and it showed. Fast forward more to September 2023. We were so excited to find out if we achieved our goal of a C school. When the email came, I ran into my work bestie's room and hollered. She was reading the email at the time and hadn't seen our score. Not only did we make a C, there were nine other schools that made a C or better. East Lee rose from an F to an A, D, and they made growth. Tramway went up from a B to a C. Not only are we at Lee Senior working hard, but so was Lee County as a whole. We had done it. All that hard work paid off. As we continued to read through the letter that James Alversen sent, our excitement quickly turned to disappointment, sadness, and quite frankly, anger. There was a quote from Board Chairman Sherilyn Womack. "Last year's performance validates the many vital changes the Lee County Board of Education began since last December." It continues, "We remain committed to accountability, transparency, and improving the academic growth and performance of our students." Nowhere in this quote or anywhere else in this article-
Ma'am, your time is up. I'm so sorry.
I have the two sentences.
Okay, go ahead.
"Nowhere in this quote or anywhere else in this article did it reflect the hard work any of our students, teachers, admin, or parents." What? How can you, as a board, take responsibility for our school report card? I haven't seen any of you in our classrooms or our schools. None of you teach these four classes.
Ma'am, your time is up. I'm sorry.
You aren't the admin who supports the teachers or the parents of the students who work so hard to succeed.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you.
It's very disappointing.
You're more than welcome to call me and talk to me anytime. But not today. Thank you. All right. Next, we have our vision statement.
Sorry, I buried it. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovation, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Code of Ethics for our school board and members. The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Education should avoid conflict of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as well as we handle the work of the board. Avoid solicitation or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. Avoid the misuse of public funds. Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts. Avoid making confidential information public. The board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Board Association.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of 8:08, 2023, the special call board meeting of 8:17, 2023, and the student transfer appeal hearings of 8:30, 2023.
So moved. I mean, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have our, we have the audit report from Dr., I mean, from Dell Smith.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Board members, hope all of you are doing well.
Thank you.
Each of you should have a bound copy of the audit report, and should have received a PDF copy as well. The report is a little bit lengthy, so what I plan to do this evening is go over a few pages from the report that I think are going to be of the most interest to you all in overseeing the finances of the school district. The statements cover two main areas that we audit each year and are required to issue reports on. The financial section covers the first 58 pages of the report, followed by the compliance section, starting on page 59. And on pages one through three of the report is our financial statement opinion letter, and that is a clean, unmodified opinion, which is exactly what the board wants to receive. And this simply means that we feel the numbers presented in the report are reliable and that the financial statements are free from any material misstatements. If you will, let's turn to page 13, and we'll talk about the financial part of the audit a little bit. And page 13 is the balance sheet of the governmental funds of the district. And we'll be looking at the first column to begin with, your general fund. And you can see at the top, the district had total assets in the general fund at June 30, 2023 of $6,394,975. You had liabilities there in the middle of $629,876. And your assets minus liabilities gives you your fund balance at June 30, which is the next-to-last number in that first column, $5,765,099. And that amount represents an increase of $245,000 over the fund balance level that was reported at June 30, 2022, the previous year. And the change in fund balance the previous year was an increase of $434,000. So, you know, on a budget the size that y'all have, you know, it's 19.6 million in your general fund. Overall, the district has a budget of around $120 million. You know, increasing your fund balance $400,000, or, you know, this year, $245,000, is really like breaking even. I mean, that could have swung one way or the other very easily. So again, we would just kind of look at that as y'all broke even the past couple of years. Your unassigned fund balance right now is at about 27% of your general fund expenditures. It was at 26% at June 30, 2022, and it was at 25% at 630, 21. So it really hasn't changed a whole lot. Y'all's fund balance relative to expenditures has stayed pretty constant the past three years. And it represents about three months' operating expenditures, and that is a metric used in the governmental world for kind of evaluating how adequate is your fund balance. And at that level, we would consider y'all's fund balance to be at an adequate level for a district this size. Did anyone have any questions on fund balance before we look at a different fund?
What's the 2021 percentage you gave?
2021 was 25%. Thank you. Now, if you read, anyone else have a question? Okay, if you read across on that fund balance line, you can see that your state public school fund and federal grants funds, they show zero fund balance, which is normal. Y'all have to spend those dollars in the year that you receive them. Your restricted revenue fund had an ending fund balance of $6,36,185. And most of the revenues flowing through this fund are restricted for various grants and programs that y'all receive that don't flow through the state public school fund or the federal grants fund. Now, last year, y'all were able to collect a large amount of indirect cost from the federal grants fund through the COVID dollars that y'all received. See, I think y'all got around $3.5 million of indirect cost in that fund last year. And that fund did report an increase of about $2.7 million. So, you know, if you back out that $3.5 million of indirect cost that won't be recurring, you know, then that fund, you know, you're looking at, you know, using some fund balance potentially next year. And that would be something to talk with Ms. Jones about. But just kind of giving you an idea about, so it went up $2.7 million, but you had a kind of a one-time windfall there of over $3 million. Your capital outlay fund reported an ending fund balance of just under $1 million, $993,291. And that fund balance is restricted for capital outlay purposes. And your individual schools combined had an ending fund balance of $845,111. Okay. But again, I think the district is in very good financial shape as of June 30 in its governmental funds. Any questions here before we look at the child nutrition program? Let's go to page 58. This page shows the revenues and the disbursements of the child nutrition program for the year ended June 30, 2023. And about three-quarters of the way down, you've got a line net change in fund balance. And the middle column there shows the actual results, which was a profit for the year of $460,864. And in the previous year, the program reported a profit of $2.3 million. In 2021, the program reported a profit of $605,000. And you go back to 2020, and the program had a loss of about $580,000. So the program has made dramatic improvements over the past three years. In the 2022 year, the year ago, where y'all had a profit of $2.3 million, almost every district we audited showed significant profits last year. I think the state, all children got to eat free, for one thing. And then I think there was also an increase in the per-meal reimbursement rate that the federal government was giving. So again, I think most districts that we've been to so far this year have shown a big drop in their profit in that program. But still, y'all are paying full indirect cost. Full workers' compensation is being paid by the child nutrition program. Those dollars go right back into your general fund bank account. So the program's doing really well. It had cash balances at year-end of about $3.7 million. That was an increase of $447,000. So again, this program's in very good financial shape at June 30. Questions there? Starting on page 69, or 59, rather, is the first of three letters that we issued relating to the compliance testing over the board's internal controls and expenditure of state and federal grant awards. And we're required each year to perform compliance audits on the state and federal grants received by the district. And as part of that audit, we assessed a significant number of payroll and general disbursement transactions for compliance with various state and federal guidelines imposed by the granting agencies. And we're happy to report that all three of these letters are clean, unmodified reports, which means there were no internal control weaknesses, findings, or question costs reflected in any of those letters. And on page 69, there is a reference to a prior-year finding that we reported. During the 21-22 fiscal year, the finance department underwent software conversion and had problems with various general ledger account reconciliations after the conversion. And that resulted in the audit being late last year. And our testing for the current year revealed no issues with the district's reconciliations. And we're happy to report that this matter is reported as corrected on page 69 for this year. You should have also received a separate three-page, we call it a required communications, letter from us. The letter basically has boilerplate language and is considered a clean report. It lets the board know that there were no difficulties or disagreements encountered in dealing with management during the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements noted, and no reportable issues were noted during the audit. We did also perform detailed testing of receipts and disbursements over the individual schools. And we typically note minor areas in that testing, and we give Ms. Jones a detailed list of any and every finding that we have in those audits. There was nothing of a material nature noted. If it was, we'd have reported that to y'all. There was one school that had quite a few- school that had quite a few comments and issues, nothing material, but just a lot of different things. And I think Ms. Jones's department, they've been working with that school and doing a little bit, little bit more work to try to get those issues resolved. But overall, it appears that the school bookkeepers and principals, that they're all doing a good job of managing the finances of their schools. That was pretty much all I'd planned to cover out of the report. Did anyone have any specific questions? Anything I didn't go over that you wanted me to cover?
I just have a crystal ball question. I know you've got that crystal ball in your pocket. Can you make any guesstimations as to what might happen with our child nutrition program now that we've shifted back to user pay? I mean...
I think this past year was, they were on the, they did applications this past year. The profit was still, you know, that half million dollars or so. So I'm thinking, as long as everything stays steady, they should be able to continue, you know, you know, at least making a profit, breaking even, and paying indirect costs, paying the workers' comp, and just holding their own, which is what you want to see.
Absolutely.
Yeah. We've got quite a few districts where the, they're not paying indirect costs, they're not paying workers' comp. And in fact, the, the general fund is having to, to look at possibly subsidizing those child nutrition programs. So, you know, if they're able to kind of stay out off y'all's radar, that, that's what you want.
Well, we've had to do that.
Everything is wanting to sing tonight.
Yeah.
We've had to do that in the past, and I was just, I know for, well, through COVID and for some time beyond, the federal government was really kicking in substantial funding, and that's slowly going to stop, and it's going to come back to us to continue. So I just wanted to see what your thoughts were, what you're seeing across other districts and across the state. And you just answered my question. Sounds like we're doing a pretty darn good job. So, thank you.
Sure, the child nutrition director will keep you more updated than I can on that. Anyone else have any questions? Well, I thank Ms. Jones and her staff for their hard work. They always do a good job of getting us what we need and getting us in and out. We appreciate them.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
Since we have the chairman's report, I have quite a bit here. First of all, we have the Evergreen Audit, which is one of the things that the board has done since December. It showed us a lot of things throughout the community that we really needed to know, particularly one that has to do with the compensation study and what our employees is being paid, which is not up to par to our surrounding counties as well. We've done the performance audit. The performance audit is linked online because it's very lengthy and very heavy. It also had, we had the superintendent has already went through the process of going through all of the recommendations. There were 97 recommendations from Evergreen Audit. The number of findings and recommendations that we have already completed is 40%. The number of findings and recommendations that requires more additional board decisions is six. The number of findings and recommendations that are in process is 43. The number of findings and recommendations that we feel require no action at this time is simply nine. This internal audit provided both findings and recommendations. The findings do not change unless there is a substantial evidence to prove that the findings were incorrect. Therefore, the board has moved ahead on the premise that the findings are correct. We're not making any excuses. We're just want to move forward. We want to know where we at and where we plan to go. I can appreciate that we have philosophical disagreements at times, but I believe this is healthy. I think this is very healthy. That we have open communications on what we can do to improve our schools. We cannot bend the fabric of reality. I remember a quote that says, "He uses statistics as a drunken man uses a lamppost for support rather than illumination." That was from Andrew Long in 1844. I would like to think that this particular audit has brought illumination to a lot of things that we will be able to improve within our school system. The staff, which I'm extremely proud of how they've done this as well, you will find this color-coded, because they don't have copies for everybody. You have all these things color-coded in what progress that they've made so far on following some of the recommendations, most of the recommendations from our Evergreen Audit. It's a very lengthy thing. I recommend that people go out and read it. It's, we put money into it, but it also, it provided substantial savings to pay for itself more than once. The next thing we have is the SAGA has an annual meeting on September the 28th and a 5:00 p.m. reception for a dinner and a program. There's a link to that as well in the chairman's report. And we also have plenty of opportunities for development as the board. I'm proud as far as them going ahead and trying to do something called professional development. Most people don't know this. The average school board member makes $300 a month. We are the only elected body that I know of that is required by law to have professional development-type training. We're required to have 12 hours every two years. We actually had three board members show up this week to take a budgeting class at the central office as well. We've made books available so people can come in that, I mean, board members that are taking these courses and classes. We have over 20 classes and a video subscription. And the other opportunities is also linked here as well for the board members. And we have an annual conference that's coming up in Greensboro. And we also have a law conference that's in Asheville, if anyone wants to go in that direction. The delegate assembly is something that is also a part, it can be just a part of that annual conference. So as a board, we are going to have to decide on at least four people that may consider to be delegates before we finish this meeting. So we need to discuss that. And what that means is, are you available to be there in person at the conference? And we have up to four, so we can take all the nominations. So if anyone right now, if you have a nomination for some delegates or that thinks they can attend in Greensboro, I need you to let me know. Can you go, Senator?
Madam Chair, I will already be there a day ahead due to the...
Your position.
Yes. Board of Directors.
All right.
Madam Chair, my calendar is open if I need to be...
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to participate as well, if possible.
Thank you. Can you go, Patrick? Can you go, Chris?
Sign me up.
Eric? Okay. All right. So we have Sandra, Alan, Jamie, Chris, Eric, and myself. Those are the nominations for delegates. Someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve that slate of delegates.
Okay. Give me a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, motion passes. That's taken care of. Okay, the next thing I want to talk about was how...
You didn't call for the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, I thought we did. Okay. The next thing that I was wanting to let the community know as well is we now have our finance and our, our facilities committee chairs are actually working with some of our county commissioners on a regular basis so we can talk about the budget before it becomes an issue, like right, like two or three weeks before. They're trying to meet at least quarterly so they can go over some of the things that is the most concerning to our community. And so that, that says a whole lot. So I wanted to thank them for doing that as well. The status of our superintendent search is, we put out a survey, and we got less than 1% back from the survey. We also received more completed surveys from staff than we did from the community. That survey, I want to thank the ones who took the time to do this, to, to write in the survey and to respond to that survey, because it, it will assist us to a certain degree in our superintendent search. The biggest thing that we probably need to know that's coming up next as far as the superintendent search is, we are going to have our next meeting, it's going to be, or the dates that's most important for the board to recall, is on September the 22nd, is they will make all the applications for the people who have applied for the superintendent position. They will make that available to the board members. And then the 22nd through the 25th is when you have a time to review it. And on the 25th is when we meet to start with our first round of interviewees. And that's the main thing we had. Also, in reference to, next, we're going to have, Dr. Dawsonbach is coming up. We were discussing school performance. This is not something, this is not a reply to the comments that was made. Actually had notes before he came up to say, "I want to express my sincere gratitude for our outs, for your outstanding leadership and dedication to our school and community. Your unwavering commitment to creating a positive and nurturing environment for both students and staff is truly commendable. Your vision and your guidance have not only shaped our schools, but have also left a lasting impact on all of us. Your tireless efforts to promote academic excellence and foster a culture of inclusivity has been instrumental in their growth and success. We thank you for your tireless work, your compassion, your unwavering belief, and the potential of each student. You made a significant difference in our lives, and we are truly fortunate to have you." I wrote this, and I also sent letters to the principals. They was, so don't throw it away. It's not a bill. You'll tell it's handwritten letters to each principal, to thank you for your service. And I can tell you, as a board, particularly a few select ones, got fired up once the superintendent presented the grades to us. Not fired up in a bad way, fired up in the fact that we're looking at the numbers and we see how this, how this stuff is measured, and no one is happy with it. I can tell you that the superintendent at DPI is attempting to do whatever she can to change the way that our schools are graded. We also found some significant heroes in the process. One said, "I'm certain that a lot of the community may not be aware of, but some of the things that they have done, and we're hoping to highlight that with our, with James in the back for our Public Affairs Office. When we look at our scores, when all of us, and I think the board feels the same way, we see these scores, we don't look at a student has failed. That's not personal. It's not an attack on anyone. Something called a low-performing school is not a personal attack. It is a fact. It's an unwavering fact. You cannot change the fabric of reality. What we can do is look at how we can get that changed. If they're wrong in the way they're doing it, then we need to, as a board, we need to make resolutions. We need to be calling, and the teachers do it as well, students are welcome to do it as well, call, make the phone calls. It's a great thing for civics class. The way these schools are graded is definitely not proportional, and you can see that, you can see there's a lot of inequity involved in this. You will not find an A or a B in some of the classes, I mean, in some of the counties. And you can look at that exactly by what their economic growth is and what their, what their salaries are. Let me find that one real quick. Because that was the one that I think that made me say, you know what, we really, really need to go back and talk to not just our elected officials, but we also should explain it to the parents as well on why this is happening. Because you will not find an A or a B in any of the schools that have a certain amount of children that are economically disadvantaged. And if you do see that, I'd appreciate you sending it to me, because I have not been able to find it in three-year standing. Okay, Dr. Dawsonbach?
Good evening, everyone. Before I get started and go into performance grades, I'd like to do two things before that in my report. First, I want to call Mr. Gary Hart, the Director of Career and Technical Education, to the podium, who's going to provide some information to the board regarding some successful and quite frankly, very cool camps that we pulled off this summer. And probably, again, the best part of the presentation tonight will be some great students that are going to share their experience at those camps. Mr. Hart?
Good evening, Madam Chair, distinguished board members, Dr. Dawsonbach. We are extremely excited and feel fortunate to be here this afternoon and have our kids share their experience, their camp experiences that they had this summer. And some are repeat offenders, so they've been with us for several years. And some have even been campers themselves, so they can share it from different aspects. But we're very excited to have them here and share with you. But before I do, I'd like to give you a little background about our camps and where they came from. So about seven years ago, we started with a STEM camp. That camp was funded in part through Pfizer, a grant through Pfizer. And that camp was very successful. We had about 80 to 85 students. We covered about eight different curriculums. And we had our interns work delivering that curriculum to students. And I think that's what lit a fire under us. We saw the benefit of our camps to those kids. We saw the benefit of providing something in the summer to kind of bridge the gap. We saw faces that were smiling, excited, engaged, you know, participating, competing. It was so many adjectives that I can use, and it lit a fire under us. And we realized that we want to not only do it again, but do it bigger and include more and different activities and opportunities for kids through our ESTRA fund. And we've been able to do that. Since that first camp, we have added two STEAM camps for younger students and one for older at each of our two high schools. We've added five culinary camps that span various ages, and they are two at each of our two high schools. And then this year, this past year, we ventured into a babysitter's camp. And I didn't really know what we were getting into. I didn't know if it was going to be successful or not, but it was extremely successful. We had to shut down enrollment. And the interesting fact is that we had a lot of males sign up for that class and participate. And through that class, they got a certification for first aid, one for CPR, and a certificate for babysitting. So that, that was really impressive and enlightening to me. And over, over the time period that we've been doing these camps, we've learned several things. One of the things we've learned is, it's a great marketing tool. You know, we're dealing with elementary students, middle school students, and we're marketing our programs. We're giving them a firsthand view of what's ahead of them so that they can make those decisions that are so important as they move forward. It's a networking tool. They get to network and, and become familiar with teachers that they will eventually have. And those relationships are so, so important, because when kids feel comfortable and they feel confident, they're going to do better, and they're going to do more. Social, emotional learning, you know, that's tied to mental health. If a student can attach themselves to something, with our camps, our groups of kids, our CTSOs and clubs, they're going to do better. They're going to be more mentally efficient. They're going to be, you know, much more equipped to do what they need to do and be a part of something. It's also a good, good platform for us to test out new programs. We brought drones in to work with kids, and we realized that's something the kids are engaged with and we want to move into. We did cybersecurity, which kids really attach themselves to that, and I think that's another direction we're going to go. AI will be something that we try to venture into this coming summer and give our kids some experience with that and see where we can go with that. So it gives us a playground to try things out and see what works best. It also allows us to bring kids into non-traditional careers. We have seen a rise in our young women in our engineering classes. You know, there for a while, we had one or two. Now we have eight, 10, you know, kids in our engineering classes and our automotive classes. And the same speaks for our health science classes. We have males in our health science classes more than we had before. So it kind of bridges a gap, gives them a comfortable area to explore and experience things. And then the other thing, which is also very important, not just for camps, but for the, for our school here, is our certifications. As I said, with our babysitting camp, kids were able to get certifications, and that's important and will be important as they move forward. And then one of the best parts of our camp is that we get to use our students as interns. And these are not, I don't know what you think an intern is, you know, whether he's coming and work, but these students teach. They provide the curriculum. They have the experience and are most likely a second-level student in the area they're teaching. So they bring a lot of experience and competency to those kids. And they're, they're their peers, so they relate really well with the kids. So I'm going to introduce our young people, and when I do, they're going to bring you a token of our appreciation. We have the cookbooks that we developed and use for our summer camps for culinary. And these are all recipes that the kids have done over the last couple of years. They have some coloring activities in there if you'd like to color or, or other things. And then our engineering kids made a name badge like this for each of you, for you to wear at your meetings. So let me introduce our kids so they can speak about our programs. First, we have Abigail Kegel from Lee County High School. Jala Simmons from Lee County High School. Autumn Martin from Lee County High School. Alicia Santos, Southernly High School. Nikala McQueen, Southernly High School. Tucker Maria, Southernly High School. And Charisma Goldston from Southernly High School. After our students present, we also have a parent representative that had a son at one of our camps that would like to speak as well. So, Abigail, if you'll come.
Good evening. My name is Abigail Kegel, and I'm a junior at Lee County High School. As a member of the Academy of Health Science, Health and Life Sciences at LCHS, I was given multiple internship opportunities over the summer through Lee County schools. I assisted Ms. Angela McDaniel, my academy director, with the STEAM camp and babysitting camp this summer. However, I am here tonight to highlight the babysitting camp as I feel is a notable opportunity given to the children in our community. This was the first time the American Red Cross Safe Sitter Course was offered through Lee County schools as a summer camp, and I don't think it could have, we could have asked for it to have been any more successful. asked for it to have been any more successful. While we all, including teachers and interns, had tons of fun with the hands-on and interactive activities, this was a challenging course, and the students had to stay focused and work diligently to receive their American Red Cross certification. They were required to show adequate first aid, CPR, and AED knowledge, which included hands-on skills using the CPR mannequins. So these students had to perform CPR and mouth-to-mouth techniques on adult and infant mannequins to receive their certificates. And I have one of the CPR babies with me if anyone wants to try or anything, Ms. McDaniel. Okay. When discussing first aid, the students learned skills such as how to clean and bandage scrapes or wounds, how to do various, how to, how to like act in various emergencies, and how to talk to an emergency dispatcher. They also learned what to do if a child or infant is choking and had to perform the appropriate techniques based on the size and age of the child. The students also were taught the basics such as changing a diaper, proper feeding techniques, and how to burp an infant. The students then had to display these skills using the Real Care babies, which are the closest resource we have to a real infant. And that is these babies that the high school bring home. They cry, they have to feed them, change their diaper, and basically if they don't, they don't get a good grade. For the older children, we discussed how long is appropriate for outdoor play, the importance of hydration and sunscreen, and outdoor safety. The students then applied these skills on our field trip to Kiwanis Park, where they observed the area while using the knowledge they gained during camp. Overall, I feel that the Safe Sitter or Babysitting Camp offered a great balance between structure and fun. Watching these students work hard to become confident babysitters and be eager to use their skills in our community is extremely rewarding. The feedback we received was phenomenal, and many people heard about this camp and are looking forward to attending. In closing, I hope we are given the chance to offer this camp for many years to come as the knowledge and skills that it offers are beneficial to anyone, even if they aren't interested in babysitting.
Great job.
Good morning, board members. So this was my very first year working the STEAM camp. My name is Jala Simmons. I am a senior at Lee County High School. And like I mentioned, this is my very first year ever working in, I'm getting the opportunity to be an intern. I represented for the Academy of Hostility and Tourism. With this academy, I've been in it for four years, so freshman until now, and it was very, it was a very interesting experience, you know, trying to talk to the kids with it being my very first year. I, of course, had a partner, and me and my partner worked together throughout the summer, coming up with presentations, kind of making our own curriculum, was trying to follow with the actual school mandated, AOTH, we should shorten it because it's too long, but AOTH curriculum, and trying to truly teach the things underneath that, so like culture, how to talk, public speaking, how to customer service, how to interact with others, communication skills, you know, all that good stuff that you need in the real world. So we came up with our own presentations. We worked together with our director, her name is Ms. Estock, and throughout the summer we got on Google Meets. She truly did help us come up with these presentations that we were able to present to the kids once they actually got in our classroom. Throughout the camp, it lasted for five days. The fifth day was more like a free day, but within the four days, Monday and Tuesday, we had a certain group, and then Wednesday and Thursday, we had a different group. And so it was very nice to be able to interact with everybody who came into the STEAM camp, and each day we taught something different. So the first two days, we taught more about food. We just thought it would be something fun because everyone loves food. So we talked about food, different cultures of food, how, you know, food varies from different place to place. And the second few days, we talked more about culture and how every culture is different in its own way and unique, and we even played some games. I unfortunately don't have anything to show for it like Abby did, but we played a globe game, Race to the Globes, to see how well they knew their places. We did give them a takeaway to take home. We had flags of different countries and showed them a variety. We played the, a flag game where they got to actually research about the flag that they had, and it was very nice to know, try to answer some questions. They even surprised some of us because some of them knew more than we did about whatever country they had. But it was also very nice to see them with their flags. When it was time for lunch, we had a lunch and learn, and lunch, I believe, was about thirty minutes, so we got fifteen minutes to eat. We got fed very, very good, so thank you all for that. And the last fifteen minutes was more so just a learning experience, so they would come in. I believe one day they made like capsules and they made different opera, different arts and crafts throughout that week. And on the very last day, we had a touch and truck, I believe that's what it's called. And so the last day, they got a chance to meet other people throughout the community who do big things. So we had a fire truck there, they were able to tell us what they do, their job. EMS was there, the lady, she was very nice. She was able to like tell us and actually let us in the EMS to show us what she does as her job, and then police officers and everything like that. So for it to be my first year, I think that it went really, really well, and I did enjoy it, so thank you all.
Good evening. I'm Autumn Martin. I'm a sophomore at Lee County High School, and this was my first year helping with the STEAM camp. So I got to experience the STEAM camp when I was younger and one of the first ones. So when I got the chance to help this year, I was jumping at it, and I got to meet my first ever engineering teacher. So I got to help in a station where the, where the children got to create their own commercials. So it was fun to sit back and watch them create their own ideas, whether they were promoting something that already existed or making up their own product. They got to think of their own scripts, so it was more student-based. And they got to think of sound effects and backgrounds, and they got to use a green screen and find out how a camera worked. And it was really fun to see that. And then they got to see their own commercials played on YouTube, and they were all like bragging to their friends about whose commercial was better. So it was so fun, and that was always my favorite station when I went to STEAM camps. And that's about it, you know? If you're ever looking for a good laugh, you can go to the CTE teacher website or YouTube channel and watch those at your own leisure. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. I hope you're all doing well. My name is Alyssa Santos, and I am a senior at Southern Lee High School. I'm, this is my second year doing the STEAM camp, and I am a member of the Academy of Hostility and Tourism. So I was fortunate enough to work in the marketing classroom. And so we had our kids, well, we had different types of drinks and different drink sweeteners, and we had our kids create their own drinks as a form of entrepreneurship. And so they were able to test out their own drinks, make their own recipes, and after they found their recipe, they were able to make their own cup. They designed their own logo and, yeah. So depending on the grade they were in, they either did just the logo on the front and the back, but if they were a higher grade, they were able to put the ingredients on their back and take it home. So all of the students were able to get a cup, and it was really fun to see them excited. But after this, we were able to give them coloring sheets of monsters and grocery stores to show that their products, like the products they have do come from stores and like different distributions. Yeah. It's also fun to see kids coming back from the previous years and being excited to participate again, along with this, like the other camps that they're able to go to, so they can go to the STEAM camp, the culinary camp, and they have, I think, also Kaleidoscope. Yeah, it was really fun to see. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Nikala McQueen from Southern Lee, and I am in the Academy of Engineering. This is my second year doing the STEM camp, and I hopefully will be doing the third one for my senior year. Overall, my experience doing the STEM camp, I felt my inner child was healed. I had a lot of kids from previous years come and them still remembering me, which really excited my heart because I connected with a lot of children, specifically one little girl named Kaylini. Every time I came for the span of the whole week, it just felt like everyone was having a great time, like they were here for that. As a child, not always getting the opportunities to do things like STEM camp, it healed my inner child because I love seeing other kids getting the opportunity to do things they may have never seen before. So in my classroom, if you didn't know, cooking is a part of STEM. So what we did was sweet potatoes the whole week, the whole week. So we did sweet potato smoothies, we did sweet potato muffins, we did drawings of sweet potatoes, we did sweet potato scavenger hunts, and a lot of kids know a lot about sweet potatoes, which is really surprising because we do have a lot of younger kids, like first graders, second graders, they knew more than I did, which is actually crazy. But I love getting to see them, you know, smile and laugh and scream, even though it might have been a little loud. It was enjoyable because they got to learn something new that they may have not before. Now, during, through the whole week, it was a lot more kids than we had the year beforehand, which I think was a lot of progress, meaning that maybe other kids have told their friends about it and they wanted to try that new experience, so I thought that was really cool. Again, when she said, "Thank y'all for the food." It was wonderful. It was wonderful. It was wonderful. But as the STEM camp ended, we did do a lot of learning, and then the last day, I'm not sure exactly how Lee County did theirs, but as Southern Lee, we had people around from Sanford. We had an electric company, I believe, and they were basically showing the kids like how to be safe and what to do and what not to do if an emergency happened, and I think they really enjoyed that, and they got to take like a little lunchbox home with like slime and stuff, stuff that they shouldn't be having, really. But my experience overall, I felt was wonderful, even though it did break my heart a little bit, having to tell them goodbye, because as the week grows, you do grow a connection with children. Even if you may not like kids like that, you will learn to love them because you were just like them at a certain age. So overall, my experience was great, and I really thank y'all for letting me do it, so, yeah.
Awesome. Good job.
Good evening. My name is Tucker Maria. I'm a junior at Southern. And I'm going to be honest with you, the first time I heard about it, I was like, "Oh, I could use the cash." So I figured it wasn't that much work. I had a free summer anyway. I'm in the Academy of Engineering, have been since freshman year, and I attended some of the first STEM camps at Lee Senior, and I actually did one of those commercials. It was really embarrassing, and it's still on YouTube, so don't find it.
Got to look that one up. Making a note now.
I had a fun time there, and that opened my eyes to a lot of things, but one notably was the editing and like video software, stuff like that, but nothing's come of that yet. But at our STEM camp, STEAM camp this year, our class focused more on like electrical stuff. We actually made circuits on pieces of paper with a small little lithium battery, a copper wire, and like a little LED light. The kids had a fun time with that, and we actually challenged them to see who could connect the most lights. I think the most was like four or five, which was crazy. We couldn't even get four or five. But the kids had a lot of fun, and they were really engaged, surprisingly, especially the younger ones. But it wasn't just all learning. We also had fun. I remember notably, we played dodgeball, the kids against the interns, and you can imagine how that went. It was fun for us, especially me. But I think everyone had fun. It taught the kids about multiple things in STEM and opened their eyes, and a lot of them want to come back next year. Sadly, some of them can't, they aged out. But I think it was a great opportunity for the kids, great opportunity for the interns. We learned, some of us learned how to deal with kids, me being one, because I've never been a big fan of them. But it kind of helped. But overall, I think it was a good experience, and I think that it's going to be great for everyone that does it, and we'll do it. Thank you for your time.
Good job.
Hi, I'm Charisma. I am a senior at Southern Lee. I've been in the STEM camp twice now. This year was my second year. It has been very fun and educational, not just for me, but hopefully for the kids. This year I worked with babies and teaching kids how to do the basics, which they didn't really understand, but it was still fun. I don't know, it opened my eyes to a lot of different opportunities that I could come of and what could happen with the kids. They didn't always listen, but it was still kind of fun. We played a lot of games, and they acted like they knew what I was saying, but I know they didn't. It's okay. I worked at the culinary camp at Lee Senior as well, and it was fun. We cooked a lot. We cooked a different dish every day, which was fun for me, but the kids, they can't use knives at all. Yeah, they seemed like they had a good time. I know I had a good time. I would definitely miss the kids that I grew attached to. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Callie Taylor, and I'm here to share my experience of the CTE STEM Summer Camp. Before I do, I'm going to give you a little bit of backstory about our story, specifically about my son, Cooper, who is in first grade at WB Wicker. WB Wicker has been a dream and a great area to take his journey on, specifically a big shout-out to Ms. Wedell, his current teacher. The main struggles for Cooper are impulse control, lacking patience, sensory dysregulation, and keeping his hands to himself. Cooper is diagnosed with autism, ADHD, and ODD. I've always had a spa, passion for special needs kids, but nothing ever can truly prepare you to be a special needs mom. The journey is hard and lonely with a lot of ups and downs. Because of these ups and downs, it makes things like summer camp hard. A lot of summer camps won't accept your child and accommodate him or even give him a chance to try. When I saw the CTE Summer Camp that had a STEM option, I knew Cooper would love it. He loves anything science and anything that he can be hands-on learning. I reached out to Caitlin David, a friend of mine, and talked to her about it and expressed my worry, and quote, she told me, "Don't worry. He has, if he has any hard times, he can come to me and he will be taken care of." That is exactly what my heart needed. I also had Ms. Womack and Mr. Hart reach out to me to make sure that they were able to fully accommodate Cooper and make sure that he was able to be embraced and understood. Both, both Ms. David and Ms. Womack wanted to learn about Cooper. They wanted to find things that Cooper liked, things that he enjoyed, things that helped him, and things that didn't help him. The first day of camp came, and Ms. Womack and Ms. David made sure to greet Cooper and I and reassure me that it would be a great day. Throughout the day, I sent pic, I was sent pictures and was provided with updates on how great Cooper's day was going, which was exactly what this mama heart needed because I was worried the entire time. Cooper came home each day with a smile and a story to tell. The CTE Summer Camp was Cooper's first summer camp and one that I will always remember. My son thoroughly enjoyed learning and engaging in all their activities, specifically the honeybees. They, I guess, made a small little honeybee, but now we have multiple at our house beehives. And he has been stung a few times by other things, but he has also enjoyed dodgeball. He did not tell the dodgeball story like you did. He said that they were able to demolish the teachers and, yeah, so you were demolishing his eyes. I want to thank everyone who made the CTE Summer Camp happen, and specifically those who helped Cooper while he was at camp. You not only made my child's heart happy, but you made a mother's worry gone, and to see her child be able to have fun, learn, and engage with others is the best thing I could ask for. Thank you, everyone.
So I, I think you can see that we do have a lot to be proud of, and I want to thank these students and parents and staff for coming out tonight, and I know you've had to wait a little bit, but we certainly appreciate you participating tonight. Now, you are welcome to stay, but I will give you an out as I pull up my presentation. If you do want to leave, you are welcome to leave, but thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Go. So I have the task next of the So I have the task next of discussing our accountability results and I'm gonna try to book in my report with uh two positives, so I think that certainly was a positive and we'll go into that and um, then I'm gonna end with one, one more positive when I get through with this. Um, it was um, it was not planned this way, or, or maybe it was. Um, I think what's important to know is all the great things that you just heard and you saw are nowhere measured or accounted for in the current accountability model that the state uses to label our schools. You can't measure fun had by all, you can't measure how a parent or student feels. Uh, this simply measures one day of testing a couple times a year. So that's not an excuse, it's just a fact and so I lay that groundwork as we begin to have this conversation about accountability results. Uh, four discussion points that we will go into tonight. I do want to review the model with everyone to make sure you're aware of how grades are calculated. I do want to highlight areas of success because there are many. Also want to compare our data to some surrounding counties, just to give you an idea of how we perform to like school districts. And also, I wanna talk about areas needing improvement and what our next steps are to help improve those schools. First, how are schools measured, you heard earlier, it's an eighty-twenty split. You can see that eighty percent is achievement and you see in each of those categories, elementary, middle and high, what that achievement score measures. Uh, just as an example and as a former high school principal, one of the things that I point out, if you look at the areas that are measured, those are courses that the majority of, of children take either their um freshman or sophomore year. And uh, they take a total of, you know, eight courses a year over the course of four years. The score that you receive at a high school represents less than thirty percent of the total student population. So I think that that's one of the many reasons why the state wants to change the accountability model. Uh, of course, student growth, I think speaks for itself. Uh, there's an expected number that a student should grow if they receive an expected year's worth of instruction and you either meet that mark or you don't and that counts for twenty percent. And of course, it's on a fifteen-point grading scale and that is outlined below. I want to put a chart of last year's results along with this year's results. I want you to see over on the right, any school that I have highlighted in green represents that they had an increase in either performance or growth this school year. Uh, those in red are the ones that the state have deemed low performing, so you can see that there are five. I have put green squares around two of those schools, WB Wicker and East Lee, because even though that is where they failed, they had a significant year's worth of achievement and growth. And I think that's to be applauded and recognized. Uh, we also had some movement, uh, Tramway moved from a C to a B. Uh, we had uh JR Ingram that moved out of low performance and also Lee County High School that moved out of low performance. Uh, so they are to be applauded because that is not an easy task. I think this is important to show so that folks understand and this is again, not an excuse, it's just a fact that the way this model shakes out, if you look on the left-hand side, it's the level of poverty within a school district and these are results from across the state, this is two years' data, they, they have not updated this to twenty-two, twenty-three data. But as you can see, the higher level of poverty, the more likely you are with this formula to be a C, a D or an F. The majority of schools in our district fall either between the fifty-one to seventy-five or seventy-six to one hundred.
Where will we be next year?
Where will we be next year?
During the testing part, uh, that's important to let them know during the testing, where did we fall in that category? We're at fifty-one to seventy-five and then next year, we're gonna be seventy-six to one hundred percent.
Next year, we will likely move up to the seventy-six to one hundred, simply because the way that the free and reduced lunch will be calculated to what we move to. Many of our schools are now considered a hundred percent free and reduced lunch. I wanna touch on areas of success and uh sort of have a visual for you to see there. I did wanna list uh eight schools there. Uh, of course, we've got some positives at all of our schools, but definitely wanted to highlight these eight and I'll go through each one of those individually. Uh, Deep River consistently is performing very well and you can see that they continued even at a high level to have an increase in both uh performance and achievement. That's a tremendous amount of growth for one year for a school. Um, despite those increases, the way the model is designed, uh, East Lee unfortunately is still labeled a low performing school, but I think looking at that movement, um, I don't consider that low performance. Uh Greenwood continues to perform very well and had a third year of consistent increase in achievement. As I mentioned earlier, JR Ingram moved from a D to a C and came out of low performance and you can see that one-year jump right there, which is to be applauded. Lee County High School also moved from a D to a C and had some improvement in every measured area as far as achievement, performance grade and growth. Uh, and that is to be applauded. And Lee Early College, uh, they continued to have, you know, they were already high performing and uh even exceeded that this year. I think this is their highest performance grade, they've had to date at a ninety-four out of one hundred. And of course, you've seen the news that they were one of the top high schools in the country. And Tramway Elementary is to be applauded uh for their continued efforts, uh, they certainly had a great year and again, moved from a C to a B. And as you heard earlier, and I think this graph speaks volumes, those are significant increases in a very short amount of time in a relatively new school. Um, and regardless of what the state deems them or calls them, I don't think we can deny the fact that some hard work took place in that building and students and teachers and administration are to be applauded. I wanted to compare us to local and state, just so you could see where we fall and there's gonna be a lot of colors, it's gonna light up like a Christmas tree and I'll explain what that means. Uh, this is overall reading and this is our elementary and middle schools. And of course, you are graded in third, fourth, fifth in elementary and six, seven and eight uh in middle school. The column at the very bottom is the state average. What I have done, if you see red, that means that particular area, that school fell below the state average. If it's green, they were above the state average. If it's that lighter green, they were right on the edge of state average, so I just wanted you to have that as a visual. Same thing with math and you certainly see a lot more green in math than you do in reading. So clearly, we have more work to do with reading than in math. And the same thing for science. And of course, keep in mind for science, that's only tested in fifth grade at the elementary and eighth grade in middle school and then you'll see on the next slide, biology is tested at the high school. And then when you look at our high schools compared to the state data, um, both of our traditional high schools, um, for the most part are, are below the state average. Lee Early College is above, um, I do wanna point your attention to the math three scores at Lee County High School, which was a significant increase and is right there at the state average. So those teachers are certainly to be applauded for that hard work. I thought it was important that we compare ourselves to two different groups. On the left-hand side of the screen, you will see that uh we have compared the, the audit selected seven di- or six other districts to compare us to. And so what I wanted to do there is um make those comparisons with two different things, with test scores, but also show you where we rank in um poverty and free and reduced lunch. On the right-hand side of the screen, you will see um where we compare with districts in the Sandhills region, every region of the state is developed, is divided up into regions where you are hopefully with uh schools with similar demographics, similar backgrounds, uh similar communities. So if you, if you take a look at those, how we compared with the district audit, um, we ranked uh second highest in terms of economically disadvantaged students. And in the Sandhills region of twelve districts, we ranked fifth highest. So I think that's important to keep in mind as we go through the next set of results. What I did on this screen is took all of our tested areas and compared us to counties that we were compared with in the audit and counties in the Sandhills region. So there were seven total districts in the audit that we were compared to, twelve in the region. If we were in the top half of that group, I highlighted that in green, if we were not, I left it alone. Uh, not that we don't always want to get better, but I do think it's important that when you compare, you compare apples to apples. And so you can see that, you know, third grade reading is doing a pretty good job. I mean, they are first in all of the counties that we were compared to in the audit and they're third out of twelve of all those in the Sandhills region. Uh, with reading, again, we have some work to do. Science as well. So thi- this is always the tough part because you don't wanna call out a s- school specifically because they are doing great work at all of these places, but clearly, there's some work that needs to be done for one reason or another. And so I wanna show you and, and point out those that we're gonna be working closely with this year. Um, and those are the schools listed, there, there are five, of course, we will work with all of our schools, but we're really gonna hone in on, on, on these five. Um, Bullock had a big drop-off in growth, which was, you know, not something that everyone saw coming, but it's something that the school is going to quickly work on and fix, they've already started that process. Um, but again, you can see that that's, that's an area that we need to focus on. Uh, Broadway has had some consistency with declining um achievement, performance and, and growth. Uh, but again, I, I think that was a huge drop-off in one year and uh I, I know that staff is committed to working hard to get out of that. I think as someone mentioned before, nobody wants to be low performing, no, nobody comes to work every day not wanting to succeed. Um, so, you know, I wanna point out the facts, but I'm also very hesitant to, you know, none of this means that people aren't working hard. Uh, Lee County High School had some growth and, and they made some consistent gains, so I want to be very clear that they had a year of improvement. But we also wanna look at that there's been three years that there's been um, in, in the eyes of the state, they've not made growth, so we wanna continue to work on that. And quite frankly, if they continue on the trend that we saw this year, they will get there. Southern Lee High School, uh, they have consistently maintained within that C area, but you can see the trend there that is a little bit worrisome. And so we definitely wanna get a hold of that because we don't want that trend to continue on that same path. Because we don't wanna stand here and have to talk about an additional low performing school in years to come. Um, and Wesley, and while there was some um improvement in growth, which is a good thing, uh, they did have a drop in achievement and performance grades, so that's, that's an area that we will be working closely with this year. So what are our next steps? And there's a lot on this page, um, so I'm gonna um first wanna hit on, uh, just so that everybody is aware, there is statute that requires a whole different set of things for all the schools that are labeled low performing. Uh, some of those are just hoops that we have to jump through and, and a lot of those things are hopefully to help provide support. But I wanted you all to know the calendar of events and what that was gonna look like because it will involve some information from the board and some feedback from the board. Um, October fifth is when the state board will finalize their results and a timeline begins. And so a timeline begins that basically every thirty days, something else is due. And you have some wiggle room within those thirty days and when I say that, they encouraged uh school districts and we confirmed this in writing, you know, between the November seventh board meeting and December twelfth meeting, I think it's thirty-five days. They said, "Please don't call a special meeting, it's, it's fine." Uh, it, it's, it's not necessarily in statute, that's just a state recommendation. So October fifth, um, by then, you will get my overview, which you were getting tonight, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Uh, November seventh, uh, those schools, along with their school improvement, uh, ch- the team chair will present plans to the board. And also, we're required to provide parental notification by November seventh, which, which we will do uh well in advance of that. Uh, in between November seventh and December uh twelfth, we have to give public access to the plans presented to you all on November seventh and allow for feedback from the public and any feedback that's given has to be considered before those plans are brought back to the board for final approv- approval on December twelfth and then from there, uh, we have five days to submit to the state. So what are our next steps as a district to help in this process? And this is not something that we're only doing with schools that are labeled as low performing. These are things that we're going to be working on with every school. Um, and it's going to be, you know, sort of a four-step process and a lot of this is gonna happen at the same time. Um, every school is going to conduct a needs assessment and within that needs assessment, there's going to be a lot of data. And it's not just test data, it's parent involvement data, survey data. Um, there's a lot that goes into that because it's hard to set goals and move forward if you don't know where you are. And so every school will be doing a needs assessment and if I did this correctly, when I click on that, it's gonna show you the needs assessment and you know, you can see some examples of some information that's already been, been put in. Uh, but this is what each school will be doing, dropping in data, looking at programs, looking at their funding. What programs do they have that are working, what needs to go away, what needs to be added, is their funding aligned to their goals, is their funding aligned to their data? And once they go through with that needs assessment, that will allow us to begin um the school improvement planning process. So within the needs assessment, there's a school profile, there's a data analysis, they're gonna identify root causes, which is extremely important. Because that's a process that sometimes we miss, um, is identifying the true root cause. Um, and I'll give you an example that we used in, in a principals meeting last week is, you know, if you backed out of your garage and you discovered you have a flat tire, well, you wanna try to figure out why your tire is, is flat. Well, you discover that a box of nails on the shelf in your garage were, were wet and it broke the box, nails fell out, busted your tire, well, if you just sweep up the nails, that's not the problem. How did they get wet? There's a leaky roof. So if we spend our time sweeping up the floor and the roof's still leaking, we haven't found the root cause of the problem. So we're gonna spend a lot of time finding the root cause of the problem. Uh, we're also gonna look at a lot of qualitative information, you know, how do parents feel about the school? How engaged are parents in schools? And I think we have to lean more heavily on parents and engagement is not showing up to volunteer. Engagement can be, do you provide a space at home for your child to do homework? Engagement can be, does your child have the supplies they need and if not, are you willing to reach out to help us get them? I think we have to look at engagement as more as just folks showing up because folks work and folks have a lot on their plates. And uh, while we have to lean on parents, you know, we've gotta look at engagement a little bit differently. Uh, we're gonna have to do some program evaluation, which I think was also discussed in the audit, we're gonna have to look at what we have and is it working? And if it is, great and if it's not, we're gonna have to have some difficult discussions. And we also have to make sure that we are funding is aligned to our needs and is also aligned to our plans to improve. Uh, we're also gonna look at the audit recommendations, I think that's clearly a next step. Uh, we're gonna develop and implement, now this is over the course of the time, some of this isn't gonna happen by next month, so I wanna be clear about that. Um, there's clearly a need to develop a Lee County Schools instructional framework. And, and with that, what that does is uh it looks at the organizing the programs, the structures and processes that we use to make instructional decisions. Because it needs to be consistent and it needs to be outlined. That includes professional development, that also includes program analysis. And all of those things, I think, were supported and outlined in the audit. Uh, from that, a part of that process is school improvement planning, we've already started this process with principals. Uh, we've provided them with all of this timeline that you will see here that I have linked. This is what every school will be following, uh, you can see that some of those dates are already passed because we've already started on the process. Um, and they will be, you know, sharing those with, with you all. Something that I think is important is out of the retreat that the board had with the discussion you all had with Dr. Harrison, three common themes came out of that as things that you all wanted to accomplish as a board that we have now passed on to our schools and our principals. From the conversations that you all had, there were three common themes among all seven board members and those were increased academic performance, retaining and recruiting high-quality teachers and increased parental involvement and engagement. And so you will see that as a running theme through principal goals this year, through school improvement goals. It will be district goals and I think will form the foundation of a potential strategic plan down the road. Uh, we will use the needs assessment um to set We will use the needs assessment to set benchmarks and action steps that are measurable. All school administrators were given an updated training on the school improvement process and system that the state uses at the summer conference in July. And at a principals' meeting last week, we went over all the expectations for what is going to go into a school improvement plan and what that process would look like. Finally, and probably the biggest task, is monitoring the implementation. You have to inspect what you expect, and that's where the rubber meets the road. We're going to have to engage in progress monitoring. We're going to have to track our goals, data checks, feedbacks, observations. And we also are providing a coach to each low performing school. And that coach is going to work with even more than our low performing schools, but it's a person that I brought in to, one of two people that I brought in to help me with curriculum and instruction. With the board extending the interim contract through December, I knew that I could not continue to do both roles and do it well with all the work that we have to do. So we brought in two principals who are retired, one that was from within our district, one from outside, that were known as turnaround principals. And they can go into schools and help guide the process. Not that our principals don't know how, but it's always nice to have an extra set of eyes and someone that's done it before. So just to recap, we have a lot to be proud of, but we do have a lot of work to do. I think it's always important, we can't say it enough, our students and staff are more than a test score. Now, that is what the state has used to measure us, and we have to deal with that, and we have to face that reality, but they're far more than a test score. Something that I think the board needs to understand is improving academic performance takes time. It is not something that you are necessarily going to come out of in a year. It's a three to five year process, but if you can see incremental gains year to year, you know you're headed down the right path. Everyone has to remain focused on students. That has to be our top priority, and that includes parents, that includes employees, that includes the community, and that includes the board. We cannot get distracted. Students have to remain the priority. And together we can move ahead, but together is the key word.
So Chris, I just had a couple of things I wanted to say, and then, I don't know, an observation I made, I guess. So I just appreciate the work that you've done to put some meat behind the numbers, right? Because it's easy to look at what the state brings us and look at letter grades and make assumptions, but giving that context is really important, so I appreciate that. And then when you talked about the root cause corrective action analysis, that's, you're speaking my language there, and I just really appreciate that, because I think if there isn't a systematic process, things can get missed. So I think that's great that you're going through that. And then you mentioned the follow-up part, which I think is something that people miss in, you know, not just school systems, but everywhere when it's related to improvements, the follow-up to make sure that what you're doing is having the desired effect. And then, I guess the one comment I noticed, so we talked about the reading was lacking versus the other subjects, and I'm just personally really interested to see next year as our first group of kids that started with the letters training come into third grade and get that first end of grade test, just to see how effective maybe that program is. And I mean, you know, to your point, it's one test on one day, but learning the things that we have about that program, I'm just very interested to see that.
I agree. And one positive thing that we are seeing is, while students are not officially tested on a state level that shows up on a performance grade in grades K through 2, they do take an assessment called M-class. And what the data is consistently showing at all of our elementary schools is those cohorts of students that have gone through and the science of reading and letters, their second grade M-class scores are giving us a lot of hope for what is potentially to come in their third grade EOG.
So, Chris, I have a question. Bullock, BT Bullock, they had the K2 data for the M-class. Didn't that indicate that they were one of the highest performers in the district?
They did. And so that's why this was sort of a shock and an anomaly. And if you really dig down into the data specifically at BT Bullock, it was that third grade reading, which is not the first cohort that would have gone through letters I'm talking about for next year. And it can literally be one class, one group of kids at one school in one subject area that can do that to you the way this performance model is designed. And specifically at Bullock, it was third grade reading. Everything else was really on par with what we expected. Benchmarks throughout the year did not indicate that there was going to be an issue, because obviously they would have intervened. And Bullock has never been in this boat, and I don't think they will be again next year.
Well, I for one appreciate your candor, given the good and the bad. We can't just all be Pollyanna's and act like this is a perfect score. We know it's not. We can't just throw out test scores because we disagree with them. We can get them changed. You have teachers' unions, you have people that can present this to the House, to the Congress, but more importantly, address this with the superintendent at DPI. But we have to have something to base it on. For me personally, I didn't look at, we went from four to five schools that, wow, we're getting worse. What I'm thinking is, we're actually making progress. The changes it's made, at least this board, since I have been on this board, we have never even followed our own policy. And that policy is 3140, evaluation of instructional programs. And I just want to appreciate you for tackling that and jumping right on it and actually giving us something to go by. I also would like to remind the board that this improvement plan, when it comes back to us before the board, we decide if we agree with that improvement plan or not. Just one tiny bit of recommendation is, the last time that this was presented to the board, we got some things kind of near the end, like, oh, this is about restorative justice. As one board member, I can tell you that I absolutely appreciate the way that you're bringing them in to do the improvement plan, because I think the board needs to know. What, for instance, restorative justice, one example, that could not be defined the last time we had this conversation. No one could define it. And I would challenge them, if that's something that we're going to look at, if they could actually come before the board, give a definition and explain it to it. Because there's a lot of things that we don't take, we don't do everything that's in a particular program, but they have the best practices. So if you don't mind, when they do that, if there's something, I think the board would appreciate hearing, I think they would, hearing the entire conversation, because we learned about some things after the fact. But I'm certain you have a wonderful plan, and I know that you are, whoever the next superintendent is, we will still hold them accountable as far as not just improvement plans, but as far as providing the evaluation of the programs in the future. Also want to commend you for comparing the counties. I suggested, I absolutely love that. If you guys, you see how he did the Sandhill, and then he did the ones that we're in comparison to. My argument personally up at DPI and the state level, as far as I can absolutely go, has to do with the economic disadvantage. So if you got any more additional data that you can provide me, that would be nice. Does anybody have any more comments for Dr. Dossmark?
I had a quick comment, if I may. To Ms. Petrocak's point, it's a broken formula, not a broken school. And I think everybody up here recognizes that. I think everybody up here also isn't running away from the game, right? This is the game. We've got scores, we've got to improve them. And so I'm excited to hear about the coaches. I hope the coaches are supplementing more than they are correcting, because I know that a lot of the teachers and a lot of the principals, all the teachers, all the principals are working really hard every day. So I hope that's the theme of that assistance there. And I just want to, you know, reiterate to the principals and the teachers, you know, it may seem like you're on an island, and if you have ideas, bringing those ideas forward is not considered weakness. So I think all the board wants to hear how we can help, and, you know, hopefully we can improve some of these numbers in this game that we play that happens one day a year. So, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, too. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, Dr. Dossmark, I just, I'm not trying to blindside you with this, but it's something that WRL reported on back on September 6th, and they asked the question, is learning recovery happening in North Carolina? I think it would be helpful for us and for the public to see some of those measures, not necessarily as part of the school improvement plan, but just overall, you know, how are we doing in those areas of learning recovery? And the title of the article went on and said, "Experts find reasons for optimism and room for improvement." And I think that ours will show that we do have reason for optimism in our learning recovery. But I think that that might be something that might come up, and let's get in front of it before, you know, it comes up and bites us, you know, however, for whatever reason. So just make mention of that.
No, I agree. And one of the reasons that I went back on the three-year trend chart that I showed and did 1819 is because I wanted everyone to see that's where we were pre-pandemic. And for the most part, we are bouncing back to at least where, and some schools even above where they were.
Do you have any comments, Chris?
Thank you for the presentation. And I agree with everybody, what I had to say. We're here, you know, it's a team.
Yep. We're here for you. Use us.
You got this.
I have been on this board pre-COVID and post-COVID, and what I have seen is an absolute determination on behalf, on the part of our teachers, our administrators, to say, we got hit, but we're going to bounce back. We may not be bouncing as quickly as some would like, but we're certainly not laying down and playing dead. And I think that the work that has been done cannot be touted enough. I have seen a culture shift here at Lee County High School that is one now of excitement and energy for learning. And I can't say that that has always been the case. I know that there was a celebration at Lee Early College with their being named one of the top high schools in our state. I know because my office is about 100 feet from the gym in which that celebration took place, and I had to hang up a phone because I couldn't hear over the cheers. I want every school to find something in this data to celebrate, because there is not a single school that does not have something to show for their efforts. And those teachers, those students, those janitors, the cafeteria, wherever and everywhere, it needs to be touted that we have done good work. We have work to do. I am not rose colored glasses over here, they're clear, I promise. I know we have work to do, but never do I want a student to feel they failed because their formula that labeled them is broken. And not one of us board members had to sit down and take those tests. Not one parent had to sit down and take those tests. And as much as the teachers would love to take the place sometimes and take that test and the burden thereof off of those students, they didn't have the opportunity. And those students rocked it. We've got some room to go, but they deserve every laud and every applause that they get for the hard work they put in, the growth we saw at East Lee, the growth we saw at Lee County, the growth we saw at Wicker, that can't be understated. And I'm excited to see it just spread through here like wildfire. That growth and that energy just takes off in Lee County.
And what I have found, and just in the last six months, watching employees or staff, it was almost like they're kind of like this, and then now they're excited and they're flying. You may not like me doing this, Chris, but I'm going to embarrass you. What you guys don't know is, the moment this came out, the very next day, the very next day, I go walking in central office, and you talking about, I mean, I cannot begin to tell you how proud, walking down the steps, I look, and there's a room full of teachers. I go in another room, there's a room full of principals. Chris has brought in two specialists, one of which came up to the office to talk. It was amazing, and they said I could share parts of the folders and the slides. They were already on it. It's not so much to step back and say, hey, we do have things to celebrate. I do agree with that. But what I admire the most is like, when you're talking about it being like a ball, I think it's like boxing. I think Chris is like, bam, they boxed him, and he's like, okay, I'm ready. I got this. And I know that that's a hard thing for you to do, particularly as an interim superintendent, but the way you took grasp of the situation and the way all your principals came in, it was just, it was mind blowing to me. I was just completely blown away watching them. And they know when they're doing a good job, like this one sitting back here doing a whole meeting. I see these things. So we do see all the things that do happen, and there are good things. We're just challenging you to, that we can get better, and I know that we can. But thank you so much for the presentation.
Well done.
Very good.
So one more thing, and then I promise I will sit down and be done. But I want to surprise one of our longtime employees who's retiring at the end of the month, and she does not know that I'm going to do this, so she's not going to be very happy with me, but she only has a few weeks left to be mad at me. Dr. Waller, would you come forward, please?
Woo, Dr. Waller!
Talk about her a little bit while she's on her way up, but Dr. Waller is a dedicated educator and invaluable member of our Lee County Schools family. And as we bid farewell to her in just a few weeks, we wanted to take a moment to reflect on her remarkable career, one that has left a lasting mark on our district. Dr. Waller's unwavering commitment to well-being and success of our students and staff is nothing short of exemplary. Throughout her distinguished tenure, she has been a tireless advocate, championing the cause of education and demonstrating an unmatched passion for the betterment of our school community. In particular, her pioneering work with homeless students has garnered recognition not only in our district but across the state. Her dedication to breaking down barriers and fostering an inclusive learning environment has truly been a source of inspiration for all. Dr. Waller, your legacy will continue to inspire us. Your absence will be deeply felt. Your passion, commitment, and love for our students and staff will forever remain a guiding light for this district. We thank you for your outstanding service and wish you the best in your well-deserved retirement. To commemorate your remarkable career, we did want to present you with a token of our gratitude and appreciation. And I believe Ms. Womack also has something she would like to share with Dr. Waller.
For me, Dr. Waller's always been like an angel, because she helps a lot with this backpack for kids and recognizes the things that we need. So we got two little angels in here that will not break. But just to share one story of the type of dedication that Dr. Waller has, I walked by her office last week, and she was doing something with someone, and all of a sudden she says, hey, wait a minute, she'd know. Because retired Colonel, I'd know these things. So what happens with the American flag? What do we do with this American flag? She was so dead set to get an American flag in our schools. So, this flag of the United States of America, this is to certify that the accompanying flag that he has here was flown over the United States Capitol in your honor. And we would like for you to have this flag and the certificate to prove that it was there. And forever, I hope the love that you have for Lee County flies all over this county. We're so proud of you.
I cannot thank you enough for all the memories and the love that this board, this district, all the employees have shown to me throughout my career. I'm not, I don't deserve any of it, because I'm just part of a very wonderful team, and I'm very, very thankful that God chose me to be here at this time, and that He has placed all of Lee County in my path and in my way. I will always, always treasure the moments that I have worked here. You've been wonderful, and I appreciate the opportunity so much, and I wish and that Lee County Schools will be fantastic. Thank you for all the kind words and all the thoughtfulness. I appreciate you and love you all very, very much. I appreciate you and love you all very, very much. So thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Dr. Waller is so good, we are actually not replacing her. You are irreplaceable, my dear. Thank you so much. All right, next we have our financial report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have before you the financial statements for the month of June. And I'm open to any questions about any of those. Just to update the board, I have been, I've met several times with Mr. Rommel, and we are working on updating some of these reports. And those will be soon to come. There are no questions in regards to those reports. I have the reports, these are two reports that we will be adding. The first is the fundraiser donation report. I have talked with Mr. Rommel, and we have got this. This will be a Google Doc that will be sent out to the schools, and they will be responsible for completing the information so that those fundraiser forms that come before the board each month, that will be kind of a continuation. It will show you the follow-up after they have had those fundraisers to show what was actually received, as well as items purchased. And those will be reported to the board on a quarterly basis. So we will be taking the first round to the Finance Committee at the September Finance Meeting, and it will be reported to the board at the October meeting. The second form you have is the grant report form. Mr. Rommel and I did discuss the different grants. So those are the grants that you find within the restricted fund, which is Fund Eight. So I will be reporting to the board on a quarterly basis as well of grants that we receive with additional information so that the board is aware of money that we do receive within Fund Eight.
I guess maybe just to add a little bit, thank you for that, Kelly. But I guess for the board's information, just the reasoning and the thought process behind these. So with the fundraiser and donation report, when I read through the fundraiser applications, you see the word classroom needs in there, or the phrase, you see that a lot. And so the idea with the bit of follow-up is that if we're doing fundraisers every year for things that are needs within the district and not nice-to-haves, I think we need to know that information when it comes to budget season. And then the one for the grants, that one, to me, is really just to highlight some of the folks around the district that apply for these special grants and are awarded to the district, not necessarily to track the use, but just for our information so we know what's going on, and additional funding sources out of the typical federal, state, local.
Now, we're going to be getting this quarterly. Does that mean we don't get the monthly report like we've been getting?
You will still get that monthly report. You're just going to have the updated information from the schools on a quarterly basis.
Any questions on the board? All right. All right. Next we have, our Board of Attorney has nothing to say.
Really? Really?
As a reminder, he did send us a wonderful document in reference to Senate Bill 49, just supposed to be aware of, but we were already on top of that one. So next we have the committee reports, so I'll start with curriculum and instruction.
Madam Chair, I am pleased to announce that we will have our first meeting on September 20th, 3:30 PM, Southern Lee High School.
Facilities and Technology.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had six items updated this past meeting, so I'll try and get through them as quickly as possible, but I think they're all important enough to mention and bring the board up to speed on. So the first one was a technology equipment purchase, which is on the consent agenda tonight. It was the unanimous opinion of the FNT Committee to approve this bulk purchase of approximately 1,441 student and teacher Chromebooks, computers, laptops, printers, interactive touch panels, TVs, and monitors at a cost of $405,025.19. The FNT Committee then sent that to the Finance Committee to review. I will note that the bulk purchasing was a recommendation of the performance audit, and I did not write down the number of that. I apologize for that. But that'll be on the consent agenda tonight. The second one is a district website hosting and content management system, and that's also on the consent agenda. It was the unanimous opinion of the FNT Committee to approve a one-year contract for $97,650 to Aptige, which we then sent to the Finance Committee. This was also a recommendation on our performance audit, recommendation number 6-9. We recommended a one-year contract, even though they bid a three-year contract, because there's some regulation changes with regards to hosting school content this year that Aptige and every other company has to abide by, I guess by the end of the year. James, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but we're basically just making sure that they abide by that before we do an extended year beyond that. The subsequent years were bidded at $66,000 a year, which is a savings over our current solution of about $14,000 a year. We're spending about $80,000 on hosting and remind. I think the new system will replace both of those. So the upfront, the first-year cost is going to be for migration, that'll be a complete overlap, there's no savings there. Migration and training for all of our teachers to use the new system. Let's see, I think the target for the new website will be the 2425 calendar year for that, so that's on consent agenda as well. We received an update from our latest bus inspection. That happens every year. It's an annual audit by the state where they select a number of buses and just kind of run them through the paces and make sure there's nothing going on there. There were four buses that were marked for various reasons. Some of them were as simple as a partial LED was out. So all of those findings from the audit have been corrected. All of the buses are in good standing, so I appreciate our maintenance department for taking care of that. We received an update on policy 5030-R, which is our facility use fee schedule. This was a recommendation on our performance audit, recommendation number 5-2. This does not require board approval, but it was presented as an FYI to the FNT Committee as well as the Policy Committee and the Finance Committee. And the FNT Committee was in favor of this update. We received an update on our district support for Here Comes the Bus app. This was in progress prior to the performance audit, but it was also recommended in there because we haven't completed it, so it was recommendation 7-4 in our performance audit. Here Comes the Bus is an iOS and Android app that you can download on your phone. You can track your child, see where their bus is, if it's running behind, if it has a substitute, that type of thing. It's great for parents and guardians that may be working in the afternoon, make sure that their kids get home, that type of thing. It's really, really neat. It integrates with our GPS systems that we have on the buses right now. There were some components that were on back order, that was the delay. So the transportation officials are working to get trained on the software and how to implement it. We're hoping to pilot that in October and November on a couple of buses, and if everything goes well, we'll roll that out with the second semester. That's the target. That update is no additional cost, so it's everything included with what we already have right now, our solution that we already have with Synovia Solutions, I believe is the name of the company. And then finally, last update, we received several facilities updates. The modular shuffle that we did, I'm calling it, at Greenwood and Edwards, I believe is in place. It should be ready any time now, if it's not already. The eight-room modular classroom at Southern Lee High School is on order. It's on track for second semester opening date. And the security entrances at the high schools and the middle schools are 98% done, so just tying up a few loose ends there. And I did want to note that the security entrances caused some last-minute changes to the parking situation at Lee County High School, which gathered a little bit of feedback to the board, and I'm sure to principals and superintendent as well, because we have a lot of dual enrollment students there. So there's a lot of students going and coming, and we were trying to get as many of those students going through the front entrance as possible during the day. But I just wanted to take a moment and commend Principal Barnhill for listening to that feedback and pivoting. I know that was a, she kind of came into that position halfway through the implementation of that solution, so I just really wanted to thank her. And the next Facilities and Technology meeting is Tuesday, September 26th, at 4:30 PM at the Heinz Education Building. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I do have one question about an item that FNT has on the consent agenda. Shall I address that now or before we get to consent?
Can I ask which one?
My question is about the webpage hosting service bid.
Take it off of consent and put it up.
Either way, I could probably get my clarification now and then leave it alone.
Go ahead and try that first.
This particular bid package, that includes website development for the new site or just hosting?
Hosting for the new site and moving current content that we want to keep over to the new host, and then training teachers and staff on updating on the new host.
Okay, so I heard you say the new webpage is slated for 2425 school year, but we're entering into a one-year contract, so it sounded like the new website was going to be up after the one-year contract expired.
I'm not 100% sure on that. I can ask James, I don't know if you have an answer to that one or not.
I think someone here does have an answer. Maybe from IT Department? Or James? Because isn't it going to be a new, I was under the impression that it's a new website?
Yes.
Develop it? It's not, we're not just hosting, it's a brand-new website coming out. That's why we haven't made changes immediately. Am I correct?
That's correct. They'll develop an entirely new website for us. That'll begin as soon as the contract is signed. The one-year contract, the first year of that contract will start with 2425. So that'll start July 1, but the work to actually get it up and going will start immediately as soon as the contract's signed.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to blindside you with that one. I just want to make sure I knew what I was voting on.
Jamie, do you have anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. All right, next we have Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also have a fairly lengthy report, but want to give the board as much detail as possible. So Finance met on August 28th. We did have a very full agenda, as I just mentioned. So the technology equipment purchases and district website hosting were covered by Mr. Rodotti in detail. So the only two notes I had there were that, first, the Finance Committee did unanimously agree to push those forward and place on the consent agenda. And as Finance Chair, I just wanted to note that the web service contract recommended, while not the lowest-cost option, the committee agreed with the scope of that service, provided merits awarding that contract to Aptige. The committee also noted that the annual cost for the Aptige service will be less than the existing website host and emergency contact service combined by roughly $24,000 annually, so we will recoup that upfront cost over the next few years. For the technology purchases, I wanted to highlight that this group bulk purchase, as opposed to piecemeal purchases, left us with a discount of around $6,800 for the Chromebooks. So that will be a regular occurrence going forward, so we will reap benefits of those quantity purchases. So we discussed an ESS contract. So this is a contract for the same company that provides our substitute teacher service, and the request was for an addendum to that contract to include custodial and child nutrition subs and site-based subs at East Lee, Wesley, and Lee Senior. The site-based subs show up daily to fill vacancies due to unfilled positions. There are additional details available in the packet tonight, and that one is listed on Consent Agenda. We discussed the Ed Direction contract. This is for professional development at Wesley, paid for with school Title I money. Excuse me. I was able to have a conversation with Ms. Eggers and Ms. Cox, who is the principal at Wes regarding some general concerns about the discipline subject in general, which I do appreciate and just wanted to mention. And just to summarize that briefly, Wesley has taken some intentional steps to ensure that all students and staff understand the expectations for behavior. And the purpose of this program is to provide staff with the skills to help drive those expectations and desired behavior. I did mention during the discussion in the Finance Committee that I think this would be a good topic to perhaps bring up in the CNI Committee meeting, since we've talked in the past about adding discipline discussion there. So just wanted to highlight that. The contract for one year of training and support is $120,000, and again, that will be paid from schools' Title I funds and is on the consent agenda tonight for approval. The compensation and classification studies, so the performance audit recommended that we conduct both of those to ensure we're in alignment with local wages and are staffed at proper levels. That item is under new business, so we'll discuss more at that point. We reviewed a banking service RFP discussion, so this was also from the performance audit, and it was recommended that we would put out an RFP for banking services, which has not been done in far more than the three years, which we actually currently have a policy that states we should do that every three. The committee did review some surrounding county RFPs that Ms. Jones pulled for us as examples. Those are provided in tonight's packet, if you guys have a chance to review. If you've got any feedback, comments, concerns, feel free to pass those along. The committee did discuss that three-year detail in the policy for sending out those RFPs, and we decided and agreed that three years is too frequent, given the amount of work that it takes to potentially switch banks. So Dr. Waller was going to add that policy to the next Policy Committee agenda, and we would like to see that changed from three to five years. Once that update's complete, Ms. Jones will send out that RFP for a five-year banking contract. Next item was EC contracts, over $50,000. So these are contracts to satisfy requirements of student IEPs, and while they are not over $50,000 yet, they will be by end of school year, so Ms. Jones brought those forward for our approval. Those are, again, details in the packet and on tonight's consent agenda. The Finance Committee also reviewed policy 5030 as well, similar to facilities. Again, this was not something required for board approval, but the committee did agree with the proposed changes to the facility fee schedule. We talked about teacher compensation for classroom coverage. That's another item that's under new business, and I've got a lot of detail to share there when we get to it. And then, as Ms. Jones pointed out during the financial report, we did continue to discuss those updates. So that's all I've got. The next Finance Committee meeting will be held on September 28th at 5:00 PM in the Heinz Education Building.
Policy?
Madam Chair, August 15th, we reviewed several policies, including the one Mr. Allen talked about in Finance, which was policy 8320 on the development of the banking services contract. And just to add to what Mr. Allen said, we're looking forward to that policy coming back to committee so we can look at those changes and move that forward, make it better. So the policies that we discussed, working on a development of policy and conducting a physical audit of fixed assets annually, that is included in that policy 8320, this is Mr. Allen discussed. Policy 6560, the disposal of surplus property, and policy 8350, fixed assets. We reviewed that, and it was consensus of the committee that no changes were recommended. Admin will request clarification from Evergreen Solutions as to why this was a recommendation in the audit. Chris McNeil, maintenance director, will provide a surplus property report quarterly from GovDeals to the Finance Committee, so that should be coming up for that. And then to develop a policy with that to rotate external audit contract every five or seven years. Policy 8320, annual independent audit administration will review the policy to determine any changes and present at the September 19th Policy Committee meeting. And we had some discussion of Lee County Schools' policies relating to the student discipline as requested by the Chair. discipline as requested by the chairman. In that was 4300, the Code of Student Conduct, 4302, the School Plan for Management of Student Behavior, 4303, fair and consistent discipline administration, and 4328, gang-related activity, 4329, and 7311, which includes bullying and harassing behavior that's prohibited, 4345, student discipline records, and 4370, student discipline hearing procedures. Committee reviewed all those policies, and no changes were recommended at that time. But the committee did encourage consistent discipline in all schools and to educate the parents and caregivers on the relationship between the principal and the SROs and how discipline is handled between the two. Our next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 19th at 5:00 PM in the Assembly Room at the Hines Education Building.
Okay. Just so the board is aware, that triggered something that I recalled. Anything that was read on our performance audit that we have decided, for whatever reason, that the staff came back and felt like this is something we do not need to explore, all of those items were sent back to Evergreen for further clarification. Maybe we were misreading it somewhere somehow to maximize that. Okay. Now, next we have is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Don't normally do poli, so you're saying we need to change the policy or we don't? Because we already have it covered in policy? Do we need to check and see if we got to change that fee schedule then in our policy?
Once you approve it like that, it'll get updated.
Okay, so you might want to hang on to that one then? Okay, sounds good. All right. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Did I get a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Next, we move on to, there is no unfinished business. Our new business is, the next subject is in reference to compensation in the classification study that is being brought before the board. It's my understanding we got this as a recommendation. It was part of the Evergreen Performance Audit. And Allen can answer any of the questions as he needs to. I want you to know that I think we had this discussion previously. Evergreen had requested $100,000 to do both, and we convinced them to take $75,000. The difference in the pay during our report, it talked about what the Lee County government paid for the compensation study. I'd just like to remind the board that the Evergreen recommended that we do both studies, both class staffing and compensation. A compensation study is always much more expensive. And that was one of the recommendations. My, the rationale behind this was provided to me was the staff community needs to know we understand that compensation is more, is an important aspect of the job satisfaction and financial building being. We need to, they deserve the discussion, so they're going to have opportunities for them to discuss things back and forth with us. They need to be able to discuss market rates, industry standards, employees' roles and experience, and possibly explore some of the non-monetary benefits, such as flexible work arrangements, professional development opportunities, positive work culture. They'd also like to highlight the growth opportunities, discuss the potential for career growth within Lee County Schools, and how that might increase, how that may lead to increased compensation over time. The study is also going to ask for Pacifics to encourage employees to provide examples of their contributions or reasons why they believe that the compensation should be justified. And there was a whole list, and I'll be more than glad to share this with the board members, but the rationale between doing it now as opposed to putting out and RFP or trying to find someone else to do it was, we have got to be efficient, and we need to get this streamlined. And we need to do it, as you know, we have a superintendent search going on. All these deadlines are coming up. And the quicker we can get on this, the quicker we can get it done. And also, because Evergreen came in the first time to do our, to do the performance audit, they're already fully aware of a lot of things with our staff. So that would be my input on that. So. Does anyone else have any discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I can add to that. And thank you, Madam Chair, for the, the update. So you, you pretty much covered most of the points that I wanted to discuss as far as pricing, some of the discussion with the county regarding what they paid, just so we kind of have an idea of what another company may charge for that service. The only thing I guess I would want to highlight is, to me, I would like to ask that the board forego an RFP on this, so we can go ahead and get this wage study. Because I, I think, knowing the amount of time that, that classified staff has had pay frozen in our county, I think there's going to be a significant finding to increase wages. And we need time to build the budget for next year and to provide information to the county surrounding whatever that request may be, to make sure that we get that done in time. And honestly, with that, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that the Lee County Board of Education approve the contract proposal from Evergreen for the compensation and classification studies in the total amount of $75,000 to be paid from fund balance.
Second.
Any discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the teachers' compensation for the classroom. Allen?
Yes, ma'am. So I do have quite a, quite a bit of notes here that I wanted to share from Finance Committee. And to be honest with this program, so it, it's kind of a lot of point, counterpoint, because there was a lot of thinking through this. So just to explain to the board, so classroom coverage compensation is a program that was started during the COVID era, created to, so basically, when staff was being sent home or missing days due to COVID policies, the school system experienced frequent and short-notice classroom vacancies. So this program provided monetary compensation when teachers were asked to forego their planning period and cover a classroom to teach another class. So prior to the implementation of this program, teachers would still be asked to forego that planning period, but were not compensated financially. It was noted that, so teacher contracts do mention completing other duties as assigned, and class coverage used to be one of those duties. However, our Policy 3430 says that a school improvement plan must provide duty-free instructional planning time for every full-time assigned classroom teacher, with a goal of providing an average of at least five hours of planning time per week. So with that, I think that providing that financial compensation shows that the board believes that the planning period is important. And, I mean, really, so if they're foregoing the planning period, I have to assume that they're doing some work at home or at some other point. So I think that monetary compensation helps to make up for the request to do that. So having noted that it's a COVID-era program, obviously, the pandemic is behind us at this point, but this program's still in place. Excuse me. So there were some instances seen more in the past after the initial rollout, where the substitute protocols using our substitute program that we have now were not necessarily being followed. So the intent of this program is to be like the last effort. So if we can't find a substitute through our agency, then a teacher would be asked to come in. So at the beginning of this program, there were a few schools that weren't clear on that. So those inconsistencies were addressed. And if you go back and look at the, the monthly spend, you'll kind of see where that took place. And the schools all kind of level out. So some general feedback that was heard regarding this program is simply that the program is well-received among our teachers. It is manageable by our administration, and it does act as a morale booster to, again, show that the board recognizes the value of the planning period. So with regard to funding, since this is Finance Committee, the program cost was approximately $46,000 in the 2022, 23 school year. The funding source for this has been ESER funds to date. So it's, it's never come out of local funds. I want to make sure I highlight that this would be the last year the ESER funds would be available to cover that. So when we would have this discussion potentially next year, it would be a local funding source. And I do want to make sure everybody keeps in mind that we're still looking at a revamp to the local supplement structure. And spending on a program like this technically would take funds that would be available for a supplement structure and kind of shifts them into this classroom coverage. So while it is a small amount, $46,000, it's a very teeny percentage of total supplement. Just wanted to make sure that that is noted. I think that covers all of them. And then I, I guess, so again, I'd like to make a motion. So considering all these points back and forth, I would like to make a motion that the teacher compensation for classroom coverage be continued for the 2023, 24 school year.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had a quick question, if I could. The, just to make sure I'm understanding these charts, the, the unfilled column is basically what we're paying for coverage. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Yep.
And then it looks like, you know, this probably goes without saying, but some of our schools that were highlighted as low-performing are, have some of the biggest unfilled, or lowest fill rates, I guess, as far as classroom coverage.
And to add to that, I asked with Dr. Dawsonbach, I sent you all the questions, I'd like to see the correlation between the teachers who maximize the lesson planning and student growth. For years, it's kind of like a double-edged sword for us. We, we respect the teachers. We respect that they need to have time for their lesson planning. The law clearly states that we have to do that as well. We want to. And then the, in our uninterrupted lunch periods and cycles, so I went through those laws and the, as well. And I asked Dr. Dawsonbach to go back. It's going to be kind of hard to do what we've already done in the last, you know, two years, because this is year number three. And my thought process was, the first year, oh, wow, great, thank you. The second year, oh, wow, this is amazing. Third year, then they start to expect it. I'm not saying it shouldn't be expected. I'm saying that we have to, we, if we have the evidence in front of us that we can prove, and, and I, and again, I could be completely wrong, but when you have teachers that cover down as well, they already know the students. Sometimes they're more well-behaved. So I didn't know which way, until you just mentioned that, which way it may lean as far as the performance, the school performance, and how many of them miss can teachers. Because are they doing actually better when we utilize our own teachers versus using the contractor that we have? And by the way, what I could figure out in the math was about $4 maybe difference. So these are some numbers and questions, the list of questions that I sent out, you know, about how does the lack of a planning period relate to the academic growth and performance with solid lesson plans and things like that. Dr. Dawsonbach is going to have those not prepared, because we know we're going to do it next year. It's just in case this war to come back up. Because this is the very end of the ESER funding. And, and I think we've got some data to work with there. You think, Dr. Dawsonbach? Is that good?
Okay. All right.
I just thought, okay, the idea that changing the supplement structure might preclude this program, I find to be just a problematic premise to start with. The supplement structure is a recruitment tool to get teachers to come here. But if we can't compensate them for extra duties that they're doing for us when they're here, we're not going to keep them. So to me, this is a payment-for-service rendered, not just a gratuity or a token appreciation. So the coverage of classrooms necessitated by illness, necessitated by unfilled positions, I think that that versus our recruitment tool are totally different creatures. I know that's not a discussion for today, but linking those two as, if we give money to you for covering a class, then it takes money away from future supplements, I think is a problematic premise.
So I guess the, the point to highlight there, Sandra, was just that the funding source is the same. So both this program as well as local supplement come from local funds. So since that is a finite bucket of money, that's the reason I say theoretically, or I mean, really in practice, if, if this program remains and we don't have ESER funds, then that would come out of local funding.
I understand.
And I would, I'd also like to say that once, we also have to look at what's the best interest. If a teacher, and, and I see this, I see teachers that have two jobs. I'll go down, I went to a gas station, I saw a teacher. I go to the UPS store, I saw a teacher. It's true. You can't make this stuff up. So if you have a teacher standing in a classroom and they, someone says, hey, can you cover down and do this class? They think, well, here I can get additional money. But they also have requirements for lesson planning, as Mr. Ladotti pointed out as well. So I think this warrants a much bigger study for us to look at the implication of using it, if it's actually helping our children more, or if there's another process that we can do. For me, I felt like we have normally, and we learned this in our audit, that we didn't have enough regulations to go with our policies. But if we had a strong regulation that stated when the services would be used, I think that would be beneficial, because we can also pay the ones who have no, you know, that need to be there. And then also, I didn't see any evidence of any abuse to the system, to be honest with you. So I don't see that happening. But we, we're going to have to come up with something once the ESER funds is gone. Any more comments?
Is this voting on the, a current teacher covering a classroom? This is the payment for that? Or is this the ESS subsystem?
So this would be for the, the current teachers who are asked to come out of planning period and cover a class?
Okay. I just want to make sure. So have we tracked any of that coverage from the beginning of the year until now, that we could make it retroactive?
We already paid it, did we not, Chris? We already paid it.
Mitty, what was the reason?
Yeah, we already paying them now because we approved it twice, correct? Or we never did?
I think the prior, the previous approval ran out probably at the end of the last school year.
It ran out on June 30th. So this is the first time that it's come before the board for this fiscal year.
So I'm going to ask a very basic question here. Teachers, it says other duties assigned. Is there any other jobs within our Lee County Schools? Because I know we have teachers assistants. They get on the bus. They still get paid more to do the bus. Where do you draw the line? How would you define this all other duties assigned? Because some schools, it's like, well, that's normal. I have to go in and cover down for a little while. It's not a routine thing. And I think the intent of this funding was because of COVID and so many teachers missing classroom time, if I'm not mistaken.
I would probably defer to HR and related to that, because it's due with their job description, and we just deal with.
You just threw Stacy on the bus?
I'm sorry, Stacy.
That's okay. All right. Well, the reason I, the only reason I'm asking this is because I've, I've watched the other counties, and, and they actually stopped after the second year because they knew they couldn't do it this year. And, but we, we have to have a plan for this, because if, if we're having to pull them out of the class, you know, from, out of their learning time, they should definitely be compensated for it. But we also need to respect the fact that they need that time. Does that make sense? All right. I'm sorry, Ms. Eggers.
It is on everyone's job description, other duties as assigned. I think this really came out of COVID with the large number of vacancies that we saw teachers leaving the profession after. I do know that I've gotten a few requests recently for this, specifically from the high schools, where their vacancies may be larger at present. However, I would also say that with those building-based subs, they're able to have a person that's dedicated. If something comes up last minute, then there's someone we can plug into that classroom more readily available. And that's something you just approved tonight on the consent agenda. So I, I would like to ask you to give me some time to track this. So far, the request for this has been minimal, I would say comparatively, but that is something we can certainly track to the retroactive aspect. As of yet, they've not been allowed to do it. So there should be a zero balance.
Good.
With the caveat that we do have teachers, as we've noted before, who are doing planning period buybacks, which is a separate topic, where they are being paid to plan for and cover classrooms. cover classrooms in instances that are not immediate or emergency situations, but a long-term solution for vacancies at present.
So would you have any concerns at all if the board were to move ahead and approve it this one time before the ESRA runs out, until we have a full investigation? Would you have any HR concerns that would come to mind?
None whatsoever.
Okay. Anybody else got any more questions for you?
I would move to approve the teacher compensation.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we have the budget amendment. Is that you two?
I will.
Or Ms. Kelly? Budget amendment? Is that Ms. Jones? Ms. Jones, are you doing the budget amendment?
I defer to Ms. Jones for questions. It's, it's got my name on it. So this is basically the amendment to add funds back. So at the, at the reset of the fiscal year, the, the board fund allotment diverts back to the general funds. So this budget amendment is to replace those funds. Did I do that right?
Yes, you did it right. And the handout that was attached just shows the compilation of the amount of money that was left from board expenses over that last 10 years. Showed that we appropriated $15,000 last year, showed the amount that we exceeded for the remaining balance, and that is the amount that we have done, the budget amendment. And then if the board so chooses to approve additional items, then we would come back to the board for additional budget amendments.
Anybody care to make a motion?
Move to approve the budget amendment.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under NCGS 143-318.11A1A3 and A6 to discuss confidential student information under NCGS 115C-402, to discuss confidential personnel information under NCGS 115C-319 and 115C-321, and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? We're going to closed session.
I can order now, call the Lee County back to order from closed session. Anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the one and two-year administrator contracts as presented in closed session.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the human resources report as presented in closed session.
Second. The reason of the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed.